Good evening. Good evening. It's 6:02 PM on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience, as well as our audiences watching tonight's meeting on cable channel 22 or on our YouTube channel, City of Peoria TV. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Can you please call the roll?
Mayor Ali, Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Grab, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler, Councilmember Regenbach, Councilmember Ruckregel.
Present.
And Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Great, great. Everyone's here. Please join me in stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, this is a special meeting. We're focused primarily on the discussion, deliberation, motions that are related to the 2022-2023 biennial budget. Madam Clerk?
We have two town items. 21-350 is a communication from Town Officials Budget Committee with a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2021, and ending March 31, 2022, for the General Fund and Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund of the Town of the City of Peoria, Peoria County, and State of Illinois in the amount of $470,612.
Trustee, Town Trustee Grab.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the ordinance and adopt it.
Seconded by Councilwoman Jackson. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just curious, how does it compare to last year's budget?
We have our township supervisor Larry here. Supervisor Larry.
Now, compared to last year, last year the General Fund was $530,612.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion is approved unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-350 is a communication from the Town Officials Budget Committee with a request to adopt an ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2021, and ending March 31, 2022, for the General Assistance Fund of the Town of the City of Peoria, Peoria County, and State of Illinois in the amount of $815,971.
Trustee Grab.
I move to adopt the ordinance as outlined.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Valpula. Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Same question.
Okay. Supervisor?
Compared to last year, the budget was $715,971.
Second question then would be, how much money do we have in reserve then? Why the increase in over $100,000?
What we did was we switched some of the money that was previously allocated in the General Fund over to the General Assistant Fund, just to make sure that we have enough money for resources.
What is that number? How much reserve do we have?
With this budget proposed for the total reserves, it's going to be $1,648,924.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other? Okay. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. In comparison here, it looks like the General Fund side was a $60,000 decrease. This is a $100,000 increase. So where is the other $40,000 was referenced in shifting it?
That will be the retirement fund.
And that's being reduced by 40,000? Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at City Business 21-352 is a communication from the Mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the Declaration of Local State of Emergency.
I get a motion. Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-353 is a communication with a request to approve a workers' compensation settlement and a release of employment claims between the City of Peoria and Anthony King.
Can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Any questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just faulty memory here. I am sure that this is what we discussed previously. All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Seeing no other questions, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-317 is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the 2022-2023 biennial budget, and on your desk are a number of handouts related to the budget.
A few handouts. I saw Director Craddy come in with a big stack like this. So, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a series of report backs. I want to thank council members for their questions over the last week that we wanted to follow up on. Since your last meeting, we've had questions in Budget Reportback Number 6 pertaining to the new positions and the costs associated with them. The monthly budget report and what that would look like. I think Finance Director Craddy sent that out. That was Councilman Regenbach's request. The water company buyout due diligence fund balance designation, we tried to clarify that in Reportback 63. The Park District discussion, we included information back in 64. We provided some details on the infrastructure bill in 65, as well as some information. And everyone should have a copy of the information on the Open Meetings Act training, as well as some information from our Acting Corporation Council. Reportback Number 7, there was a request or a question from Councilman Ruckregel pertaining to what was our, or what was the amount that was received of American Rescue Plan funds from other governments? And are we partnering with them? So we answered that question. Mayor Ali asked a question about the Springdale Cemetery subsidy. I want to apologize to everyone that that was not included in the budget narrative. We do have $250,000 that we set aside every year in anticipation of subsidizing the operations of Springdale Cemetery. We have the revised budget tables, which was part of Reportback Number 73. That incorporates all of the motions that the council adopted. It does not include the motion that was not successful last week. So it does include everything that the council put together. Councilman Regenbach also had a request for a budget motion about a pension commission and a study group. So that's included as well. On Budget Reportback Number 8, which came out today, we wanted to clarify the date and the timeline of when the anniversary date is for the water company. So that's included in that, as well as the 180 days in front of that that we would have to actually pass a resolution. So the deadline for the council acting is November 3rd of 2024 would be when we would have to, or November 3rd of 2023 is when we would have to make that change. We talked about, the next question came from Councilman Regenbach. He wanted to know about, were the full salaries for the entire year for the 30 new police officers budgeted? The answer is yes. He asked some questions about grant-funded positions. How often are those positions eliminated? The short answer is that as the grant funding goes away, those positions go away. There was a question about holding off on hiring any legal staff as we discuss contracting out that service. You know, from our perspective, we feel that we would be looking at the Corporation Council position, not necessarily the entire legal department, because we still have work that has to be done here internally. There were some questions about the administration specialist at the fire department and at the evidence technician at the police department. And there was responses from both the police chief and fire chief there. Councilwoman Jensen sent some questions in pertaining to what the interest rates might be over the next couple of years and how that might impact our bonds. Director Craddy responded in that regard. There was another question pertaining to the increase in inflation and how this might impact our budget, and particularly our capital budget. And I think that's an area that Public Works is going to have to monitor here as we see inflation creeping up, what that might actually do to our spending power as we work on capital projects. We have one other budget amendment that we'd like to ask council to consider, and that's for providing a grant match to PCCO. They've been the recipient of a $360,000 Affordable Housing Program grant to replace windows and doors in the South Village Tiff area. And this matching funds would provide that matching assistance to PCCO for that work in the community. And then we had two options for you to consider pertaining to pension funding, and I'll come back to those in a second. The very last clarification we had was on the property tax levies and the rates. And that came from Councilman Allen this afternoon. And we broke out in Budget Reportback Number 9,1, how that breaks out between operations and bonds, and then how it's broken out between the city and the library. Since we adopt property tax levies for both the city and the library, but in our appropriation ordinance, our property tax levy ordinance, and then our bond abatement ordinances, it's different than how we would look at normally seeing it on your property tax bill. So this just clarifies that, and it shows you that the overall rate is going down 1/100 of a penny. So 1 mil rate is what the reduction in the property tax levy would be. So as far as the proposed budget motions that we have for you this evening, we have four. We have the budget motion pertaining to the study group on pensions. The second item would be the grant match for PCCO out of the South Village Tiff. And then we structured two report backs, or two budget motions for you to consider pertaining to ways to close the gap on our pension funding situation. And currently, the pension fund balance in our pension funds is roughly about $2 million to the negative this year and $2 million to the negative next year due to the elimination of the pension fee. So we have two options for you to consider. The first is really a combination of what we had last week, which was options 2 and 3. That would be to lower the pension contribution by 2.2 million. We have $50,000 over the next two years of pension fee expenses that were built into this budget for the cost of mailing out the bills. We would eliminate those costs out of the budget, so that would save us $50,000. We would then set aside $1.22 million of revenue in 2021. And then, as we mentioned earlier, with the vacant positions in the police department, we could reduce the police department's budget by $621,000. That amount equals roughly about 120 months of positions that would be vacant due to not being hired. We're not going to hire 10 officers until May, and we're not going to hire another 10 officers until September. So if you take that period of time from January to May, that for 20 officers, you know, you're looking at right there, that's 80 months. And then from May to September, you have another 40 months of salary savings. So there's about $600,000 that we could reduce the police department's budget and just shift that into a transfer to cover the cost of pensions. So that's that option four that's in front of you this evening. Option five is really kind of a modified option three that we had last week. Other than we've included the reduction of those $50,000 of pension costs, so that the transfer out of the General Fund in 2021 would be $1,843,900. And then the transfers would remain the same that were as budgeted for 2022 and 2023. So I think that concludes all of the information that we have, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Manager, I have a question for starters. If the funding wasn't, if the police department budget wasn't reduced by the $600,000, but that money wasn't spent on positions, staff positions through the year, how is that money handled?
Happened, that falls right back into fund balance. So whatever is unspent from a department at the end of the year that they don't spend, that money just falls back into fund balance. So assuming that we have the revenues that are sufficient to cover those costs. So it's that combination of wherever our revenues are and our expenses are, falls to the bottom line, and then that ends up being part of our our change in fund balance at the end of the year. So if you think about it, another way of thinking about that is your household expenses. If you have your money coming in, which is your, you know, the money you would earn from your job, and then you have your expenses going out. If you don't have those expenses in that year, then that's money that you would still have to be able to spend either on something else or to put into the bank.
Sure. Thank you.
You bet.
Questions and any follow-up questions? On the report backs, Councilmember Kelly?
Is a motion to receive and file in order?
Absolutely.
Would like to move to receive and file.
Can I get a second to that? Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, discussion. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of questions. The report backs with regard to question one in Part 8. I understand the date that we have to adopt a resolution if we were to move forward with a purchase, and the working backwards 180 days. But aren't there other deadlines with regards to due diligence? My memory, having been through this now twice.
There's a series of other dates that just depend on where the council is with negotiating rules of the valuation process with the water company that then starts a different clock ticking as part of that valuation process. But the threshold point is that it's May of 2024, and then in November of 2023 is when you would have to, and I think it says 2020, it should say November 2023, is when you have to give them notice that you want to start that process. That doesn't mean that the council can't decide to do due diligence in a different way. It's just as, you can start to try and explore some of this. You're not going to have a willing seller. So getting some of that information may not necessarily be easy to get. That you would probably only be able to get the information that's publicly available from the water company.
Okay, so our due diligence wouldn't start then until, if we were to proceed, if a majority of the council wants to proceed, wouldn't begin until we adopted the resolution? Is that right?
No, I think the council can start, the actual purchase, the deadline for the purchase process and starting that process and starting the due diligence phase under the franchise agreement has a deadline of that November 2023 date.
But just my memory of it, we need time before that to begin the process if we're going to have public meetings, public input, analysis done by experts. Although I understand what you're saying, we can't get a lot of the information from the water company until we adopt a resolution. But realistically, if we want to do this thoroughly and not be under the gun like we have in years past, we should be doing this at least a year before this date. Isn't that right?
Well, you're going to have time after the valuation process starts, because there's a whole litany of items. And we'll send out the full timeline that we have for you so that we can share that with you. But there's a number of things that would go on after the council has said we want to start this process. And then some of it is triggered after the council and the water company actually agree on rules on how to actually evaluate the company and go forward with that process.
Okay, so in the next, I don't know, few weeks, if you could provide a more detailed timeline? I know somewhere in my files I have one from the last time, but it would be helpful so we all know what we're, so we can plan ahead and do it right if we're going to consider it this time around. My other, next question is about, question number four in Part 8. I guess I'm concerned about, I don't think we've really had a discussion that we're going to move forward with contracting out. I have strong feelings against doing that. I think it's important that we have somebody in-house. From my experience, I've been in-house and I've been outside counsel to municipalities and local governments. And I think it would be, for a number of reasons, much better for us to have somebody in-house. And it also is a lot less costly. So, you know, I think Councilman Euler asked a question and kind of wanted a report back in 90 days. I don't think we had a thorough discussion about contracting out that position.
I think what I, my response is that from staff's perspective, we don't support contracting out the entire department. We think that there's too much work in-house to do. And I think that we need to have a conversation with you, and some of this is a personnel matter that I think we need to have a conversation with council about, so.
Okay.
Do you have an executive session planned right after this meeting?
So as a follow-up, as part of the budget and the proposed legal budget right now, that contemplates hiring a corporation counsel, correct? Or maybe contracting out if that's what you decide to do?
The budget contemplates the corporation counsel position being filled.
Okay, and remind me, what's the staff in the legal department right now? I know we've hired a couple.
The staff, if this budget is approved, will be at eight and a half positions.
How many of those are attorneys?
That would be, that would be five attorneys, and then three and a half support staff.
How many do we have right now? Three?
We have three today with the vacant corporation counsel position. And then there's a vacant attorney position that we would look to hire and embed in the police department if this budget is approved.
Okay. I think that might be, that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few questions and maybe a couple of comments for our city manager. Let's revisit what you said about Springdale Cemetery. I think we all know the answer, but I just want to make sure everybody realized that. $250,000 in the budget. What is our responsibility towards the cemetery?
Well, we own the cemetery. And we have an intergovernmental agreement with the Park District and the county in which the first $100,000 of subsidies for the cemetery are paid for by the Park District and the county. Then anything else after that is paid for by the city.
So it could be unlimited then? I mean, I know it wouldn't be, but it could be.
It could be unlimited. We also have $60,000 that's budgeted in the capital budget that goes towards capital equipment for Springdale as well that they can utilize as well.
So remind me about the Civic Center money now. We gave them $4 million last year. Any chance of getting that money earlier since we're getting all these money from the Fed?
So working with the Civic Center, the financial support that we provided to them, it's anticipated that once the debt service is paid off, that we have the current bonds that we have that are paid off, that that's when we would see that $4 million coming back to the city. We anticipate that we'll see some interest for them holding on to that money for that period of time, but that would be that period of time we'd be looking at to get repaid.
Okay. I have to echo Madam Mayor's comment last week about the pension, which was really a bad name. I don't like, I didn't like the name either at the time. But also, I don't like the word, the choice of words tonight where we said we're eliminating the pension fee. We're not. It was really sunset. I mean, you added right to the budget, but that pension fee was scheduled to be sunset. We did not eliminate. Am I correctly saying that?
I made a proposal to the council, and the council unequivocally said no, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it seemed like the five years, I've been here for five budget now, we always pick some fights with people that, you know, that really deserve what they're getting. Last question for me is my colleague here, Mr. Allen, ask a question. Let's pick a different fight here. Tell me about the library budget before COVID, during COVID, and now after COVID? Because they were closed for a long time, so tell me. I mean, I think there was a couple million dollars different there. Can we get some money from the library since they were closed for a long duration during COVID?
The library budget anticipates that all of their facilities will be open and operational. As part of that budget, there's included in that budget, there's $920,000 of money that's transferred out of the library's fund back to cover their pension costs, back to cover their healthcare costs, and also $200,000 of support that they provide to the General Fund as part of an agreement that we have with them that that just covers the cost of us managing and administering their budget. And so I think it's, you know, And, and so I think it's, you know, overall for, for the way that, that the, the library is established and managed, it's a, it's a service that the community supports greatly, and I do, I do think we're getting a good value for that.
Did they receive their own money from the Fed, from help?
They, they may have received a little bit, but nothing that I think is, is directly out of the American Rescue Plan. There may have been some CARES Act money that, that had flowed. They did have some opportunities to apply for grants, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Yelverson to see if they've circled back on some of that, pursuing some of those funds through the, the federal pots of money.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question about motion three. That's for consideration of reducing the Peoria Police Department budget by 6,000, or $621,000. So just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, because the, the goal was to hire 30 police officers, correct?
Yes.
What is the onboarding process or the duration that it takes to, to hire a police officer, just so that the people listening can? And maybe this could be a good question for chief.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask the chief to come forward and talk about the process because he has to live with it and, and certainly understands and can talk about it from that perspective.
Good evening. So obviously, once they're hired and have to go to the academy, is, is that where you want me to start, that, that process? Okay, so once they're hired, they go to the academy, there's three months of, of academy. After the academy, there's an in-house portion, and then there's another three months of, of in-house training, FTO training, and then there's a probation period in there as well. It takes quite a bit of time to get them out there on their own. There's a shadow phase as well. After the, the FTO portion, they go on a shadow phase where another officer is following them around and kind of just shadowing them and making sure they're doing the right things and, and getting the things that they need. At times, we have to extend that to, to, to offer some more training. So, you know, you're looking at six to eight months before they're really out there on their own.
Okay, and then, so the goal is to hire or have a cohort, if you will, I might not be using the right word, class of 10 officers at a time, correct, to, until we get to that 30?
Yes, because somebody did the right homework prior to me arriving and, and got those spots allotted to them already.
So do you have, so if, if 10 members are in a cohort and they're in the academy, are you still actively recruiting the next 10 while they're still in, at the academy, going through the onboarding process?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, because my concern about this is, and I just wanted to make sure, because I don't want it, because we know that we need to fill these positions, and I don't want us to find ourselves in a situation where this money is reallocated, but then it doesn't fulfill the person, the purpose that it was originally allocated for, and that was to fulfill the position. So that's why I kind of just wanted some clarity on the timeline of, of what that looks like. So I appreciate that context, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Ruckregel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And if, if our police chief would, would stay there, I, I'll go to, that was going to be my last question, but I'll start there since he's by the microphone. And I appreciate all, all of the, the questions so far on, on this item. One, one question, or actually a couple of questions. One, for officers that have already been through the academy who may be working somewhere else, what does the onboarding look like for them if they transfer over?
It, it's exactly the same. We don't have a lateral program right now. The only difference would be they are not going to go to the academy. We would bring them and, and they'd be going to the FTO portion.
Okay, so they could, they, they could start sooner.
Yes.
They don't have to wait necessarily for a certain date. They can start as you hire them in, correct?
That's correct, but we don't have a, a lateral program now, so they would start at that timeframe when, when we're hiring.
Okay. Next question is, at one time, we were taking some of our new recruits, and at, I believe in their waiting period, I made this question for city manager, they were sort of working with some of the other departments to, and I thought, I think it was a pilot program that we were doing, and
It was.
From talking with some of the recruits, it was very successful, and it was a great way to be able to interact with the community. Are we continuing that pilot program?
It was a pilot project that we did that period of time, and it was, part of it was the delay that we had in, in getting our recruits into the academy. And so we, we embedded them into the community development department where they worked with community development as code enforcement aides until they could move on and actually become police recruits. Ideally, in this process right now, we would, we would be hiring and then sending them to the academy, and we were working the, working the class, the hiring class at that period of time, kind of traditionally in the way that we've done it. Certainly, if, if this isn't the direction that council wants to go, it does provide us some flexibility to maybe reinstate that, that program and look at, at trying to do it again.
So if, if we've got the spaces for them to go into directly, they would go into that, but if, if we are still waiting for those spaces to open up, then they would be kind of doing whatever they're going to do, and then we wouldn't bring them onboard until then.
And it would, it would be a timing of when we would identify when, when those, those positions would be available for hire and, and the timing of when we would set that up. I mean, if, if, if that's the direction council wants to go, I think we'd have to look at trying to move, accelerate up some of those, those recruitment classes to allow people some time to be in that program.
And then I guess just the last question, and I know that probably other communities are looking for those spaces too, as far as they become open. If any spaces would become open in those classes, would you, would you be trying to, to get those, or are 10, 10, and 10 pretty well where you're comfortable with?
I would absolutely love to take extra spots if we have the, the, the candidates available for those spots, absolutely.
Okay, so, so all of a sudden, if all of a sudden that first cohort got to 15, you'd, you'd get those people hired and, and get them to class and get them on, on this, on the streets, doing their job earlier?
If that was to happen, it's unlikely that that would happen, that they've had those slots, because everybody's competing for slots. We have the 10 slots, but if there was an extra couple of slots and we can fill them, I would love to do that, yes.
Excellent, thank you for your.
Well, chief, stay close. We may not be done. You can have a seat, but I would say stay close because, because you may have some more questions.
Great. Madam Mayor, a couple of other questions for the city manager. If we go to, my first question on other governmental funding with the American Rescue Plan and with other pieces, the Park District has zero that they've received. Have they received zero in the past, or is that zero in the American Rescue?
I'm not sure that, that they're, just because they're kind of a special district, I'm not sure that they've been eligible for any, I'd, I'd have to check with them. I know that on the American Rescue Plan that they did not receive funding, but I'd have to check and see if they received anything through CARES or through the CE, CRPA.
If you find out that information, that'd be helpful as well. And then on the, the partnerships there, you talked about, about $2.4 million where the city and the county are working together on, on health equity focuses. Could you maybe elaborate a little bit more on, on some of those options?
We've talked about that in, in, and have in, as some detail in the budget report backs, where we were going to, we're going to set aside $600,000 a year and match the county's investment of $600,000 a year over the four years of eligible expense of the, of the American Rescue Plan funding, to use that to address the social determinants of health and see if we can't address some of those issues in our community. The Health Equity Fund would be focused on, trying to focus on the, the issues outside of access to healthcare and direct healthcare services, more like the built environment, more like issues such as violence in the community that are causing some of the problems of poor health outcomes in the community, and seeing if we can't address some of that to help to move the needle, so.
Thank you. And then final question, I guess, on part eight, number four, just to go back to the legal services conversation. And I got a couple of calls from citizens on this. They were like, wow, did this come out of the blue? And I said, well, actually, that position's been open for quite a while. Can you just give us a history? And I forget, has, how many, and I'm thinking about, I should know this, when, when Mr. Lys retired from that position and how long that position has been, has been held open in some capacity?
Well, Ms. Kaputzka has been the, the acting corporation counsel for two years, and we have gone with two national searches as well as our own internal searches to try and find candidates for that position. We just haven't been successful in terms of, of finding a candidate to fill that slot. Most recently, we just, just wrapped up a national search and really had one viable candidate that, you know, upon further review, it just didn't work out. So I think at this point in time, you know, we, we do need to, to find some leadership in the department, certainly, and I think that we need to explore what we can do differently, whether that's, you know, revisiting the compensation issues, whether it's revisiting the approach we're taking, but it's, it has been a barrier, so.
So you, I mean, you have tried diligently over the past 24 months to sort of fill that position, and I know our department has been doing a good job, you know, sort of holding that together, but at a certain point in time, we've got to be able to, I guess, pull this one off because you don't want to see us, see myself every time and go, have we filled this position yet? And you go, no, we're still, we're still working on it.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Reganbott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, while you're up, good thinking. Appreciate the explanation on the process and the academy and whatnot. What's been the recruiting feedback you've gotten? Have we been able to extend offers for the January class to anybody yet?
No, we're still in the process. We, we have a list that we're working through right now to get them to the, we got to do background, psychological, and so we got some processes to still get through.
So if you could give us a little bit of the process before we make the actual hire, could you just outline kind of what's involved with the recruitment and the testing and whatnot?
Absolutely. I, I, I've just been in a few meetings about this, trying to get myself acquainted with the process here versus where I came from. So, you know, we, we do the testing, the written exam, it, it's done through IO Solutions. That process is done, it's graded, they move forward to an interview process. Once that interview process is done, they're scored and a certain percentage goes through. There's a, there's a, a physical agility test that's done that's part of this, there's the power test. There's two different physical agility tests, if you will. One's kind of a duty-related, walls, climbing walls and doing some other things, and then the power test is the state mandated test that they have to pass. We make sure they pass that because they have to pass that at, at the academy, otherwise they're kicked out. There's also then the polygraph, the psychological, and, and there's the, the police and fire commission, or the police commission interviews as well that are part of all of this. That's all scored together. There's military points, if, if they're in the military, they get some military points. There's some other point systems that we use as well here. Once that's all scored, the list is established, and then from there, they're able to, we, we take the, from the top, and we move down.
And how many names do we have on the list before offers are extended?
That's a, that's a great question. I'm not sure how many we had on the previous list, being that I, I just arrived here. You know, everybody is nationally is, the lists are smaller now than they've ever been before. We're currently, I think we have 15 right now that we're looking at to get the 10 out of for January.
And does that seem likely, is, is 10 optimistic, or is that a no, you know, that won't be a problem?
We're, we're hoping that they're going to, we're going to get 10 out of this list, yes. We, we're looking at some new recruiting strategies, we're looking at a new testing process, we're looking at how we expand the net to, to get more candidates. So we're in conversations with HR on that now for, for the next test on how we're going to do that.
And that was going to be exactly my next question. So are we, if we, we have 15 on the list currently for 10 slots in January, and if all 15 would be qualified, theoretically, the way it's structured now, five would wait till, um, May, because that's the number of slots that the state academy has allotted us. So that was, I would say, that was my thinking as I asked the manager to, to look into this with the chief, that if, if we're not going to hire them till September, we don't want to necessarily have that $620,000 sitting there idle. So it's no, no reflection on the department and the work you're doing. I hope you understand that. It's just making sure that we utilize the dollars. Councilman Ruckregel brings up a great point about the pilot that we had last year, but I guess that would be based on the assumption that we have qualified candidates waiting, and if, if we're able to get, we'll, we'll have 10 hopefully in January. So then this is a whole process start at zero again for the May class?
So whoever's left out of these, if 15 pass and are on our list, we'll have five, and we'll start recruiting for the next list, and then whatever's left from that list, we'll move on to the September list as well, so we just keep pushing them forward, but we'll be able to get 10 for that May list, and then we'll, we'll continue to, we're going to continue to recruit, and we're hoping that if there's open slots that we can also slide into, like Councilman asked, that we, we get into those slots, whether it's a different academy or the same academy.
Based on your experience from Elgin, is a, a group of 15, you said, that, that's pretty small compared to what you had years ago?
It is small, but as I speak to other chiefs and I, I ask them what they're also facing, they're, they're seeing some of the same declines in, in recruitment.
Thank you very much. I do have a couple of others, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Councilwoman Jensen brought up a good point, and Councilwoman, if I can piggyback on that, I think what, what I had heard you saying is, is there going to be a chance for public input before the November 3rd vote? Is that kind of where you were going? And we don't want to call that due diligence by any means, but awareness and public input to get an idea for how the community feels, is, is that fair? So that, obviously, it's still down the road, but I would say that there's, after last week's vote to possibly set aside some money, my phone lit up with multiple people talking about it, so people are aware about it even though it's still two years out, so. I also just wanted to comment on, on that report back eight. Those questions I had about the grant-funded positions and police and fire and legal, I was wanting to get that clarity out there, that we could all wrap our arms around, that this, we're not just filling positions for the sake of hiring, adding to payroll, but I, I think the justification for these positions is well documented, and speaking with Director Doolan today, he says, when they put out positions that are grant-funded, it's clearly stated on the process that this is for a one-year term or whatever, so there should be no surprises there. Councilman Ruckregel's question on rescue funding for other governments, I think, is very interesting, and just looking at the, the amount that some of the, the school districts and mass transit district got, those are, those are some significant dollars. I would just point out that the Park District has nothing, and I've been very, I don't want to say critical, but I've been zeroing in on the $600,000 that we're offering to the Park District for their own park on, in Tree, at Treewind Park, and I don't want to be opposed to that, especially seeing this, this information, but I do want it to be duly noted that the city is partnering with the Park District on this, and we're using $600,000 that could be used in other projects to help this. So I, I just, there, there's all kinds of discussions going on and around the town about fire and news stations, and I, I just want the Park District to be, to know that, that we're, I, I'll support that, but I also want that to be an opening salvo of the relationship that we can build with them working together, so I just want that on the record as well. And regarding the motion, and I don't know if you want me to get into this one right now, Mayor, but the, the motion to establish the working group, I would like to defer that.
Okay.
And out of respect for the mayor and her efforts in reaching out to our state reps, Jahan Gordon Booth and Ryan Spain to, to discuss this, and hearing some comments from my colleagues, I don't want this to get bogged down as a budget discussion, so I would ask this to come back at the first meeting in December, so that way we can So that way, we can have the meetings with the legislative leadership and then council can have a little more opportunity to weigh in, so.
That would be December the 14th. Do you want to move to defer? We don't even have a motion. You don't have to do that, right?
I don't think we need a motion if the consensus of council, I don't see any opposition.
Bring that back December 14th. Thank you.
Okay.
If that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Grab?
Chief Escheverria, question in reference to move to $621,000's budget. Now, one week ago this evening, I pointed out that almost every position we have is public safety. And that if we make cuts, it will impact public safety. And one of my colleagues said, you're driving a fake news narrative. No one here is interested in cutting public safety.
Thank you.
But we are. The council set aside enough money to have 30 additional police officers. Set that aside for the upcoming budget. Now, in my mind, that was hardly an excessive number because we, I'm sure, are expecting there will be some retirements. So if we, for example, went forward and did exactly what we said we were going to do, and I believe it would be hiring in increments of three during '22, if we got it up to 30, is it not possible that we would have retirements as well that would create an offset for any increase?
Absolutely, yeah, yes. Absolutely, there's retirements that are being spoke about. I actually today heard of another officer who's leaving to another city. So, yes, we definitely will see retirement. And know that these 30 aren't an extra 30, these are 30 to get us to where we need to be, right, at 230. I'm told we were up at 250 at some point before. So, and we're not going to see these bodies really be a full effect for us till 2023, where we'd have them all on their own. But yes, there will be definitely retirements between now and then.
And I want to remind my friends on the city council here that we have an authorized strength of 229. Are we anywhere near that at this point, Chief?
No, sir. I believe we're at 197 right now and probably around 170.
So, you know, I nearly wanted to leap out of my seat when I heard that this motion was coming, to take out $621,000 for police funding, as if this is some huge expenditure that is not needed and necessary, especially in view of the attrition that we have already suffered and will continue to suffer. This is a huge blunder for anyone to support. Number three, the chief and his forces out there every day trying to keep our neighborhood safe, and this is moving in the wrong direction. So I think that needs to be factored in, that even if we got up to 229, I'm not sure we're going to get there, even with the 30 additional during the year '22. And I, for one, want to see us to have the capability of slowing our police cars down so we can actually have patrol, so that we can get our police out into the community, as they've been trying to do, without all kinds of distraction. And that takes personnel. And almost anybody I talk to in the city feels that our number one problem is the sense that we have lost a grip on safety in our neighborhoods. So, Chief, I'm just going to tell you right now, I'm not going to support this very, very irresponsible motion to cut back on our commitment to add 30 police to the budget. And even with that, assuming that this doesn't pass, we're still going to be running low. We're not going to, I don't think we're going to be near 229 by even the end of the year, given the attrition. And we have had up to 250. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. If there's no more questions on report backs, any more questions on report backs? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, I just heard the remarks of Councilman Grab, and I had a different perspective on that $600,000. I thought that that was for, because we had budgeted 30 new officers for the entire year, and we're not going to have 30 new officers for the entire year. So that money that we don't plan on spending, we're pulling out of the budget. Is that correct?
That was the intent behind the, you know, saying that if council wanted to reduce spending in the general fund, this is one way you could do it that wouldn't have an impact, but would have the effect of reducing the operating expense in the general fund.
Thank you. And Chief, with that explanation, does this cut impact public safety at all?
That's, I think that's, yeah, it would. We need the officers, we need the bodies on the street for us to be able.
Chief, nobody's denying you the officers. And once they're hired, they're going to be paid.
Correct.
This money assumed that they were going to be here on January 1 and work all year. So that portion of that budgeted 30 new officers that is not present from January 1, that's what this $600,000 is. So it wasn't going to be spent anyway.
I would say a portion of that is spent. We have officers, we're going to the academy, they're getting paid, they're on training.
Yes, that remains in the budget. That's not being cut out of the budget. This was a, Mr. Manager, could you explain this again, please?
Again, I think that as we looked at the staging of the hiring process, that there is 10 positions that won't be hired for eight months, eight full months, and there's 10 positions that won't be hired for four months. That's 120 months of time in this budget, which is about $621,000. We've rounded it for the purposes of this. But, so that's the amount that's been built into the budget that shouldn't have an effect on, if it's reduced, it shouldn't have an effect on the overall operations of the department because those aren't positions that are currently filled today.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief. So just, I'd just like to make that clear for everyone. And I have a motion to make, Madam Mayor, on item 10 of report back eight. I would like to defer that also for the, until the December 14th meeting. There's a lot of discussion going on about it. That discussion really hasn't borne fruit yet, and so I'd like to move to defer taking action on number 10. All right, we have a motion?
Well, you have a, you have a receive and file motion on the floor, but you can, as we have done in the past, you, even under that, you'll have the opportunity to make motions to modify what will be the final spending plan of the department, of the budget as it goes forward, and then get acted on in the future. Now, to Councilman Kelly's point, a deferral of this, you have one meeting left in the year after this meeting. You have to pass a budget at some point in time that includes addressing this item. So it has to be resolved. And if not, Mayor, I would respectfully request that we have another council meeting, likely next week, to continue this dialogue and continue the conversation because we need to come to having a spending plan for that. But by the, by the end of the year, you have to have a spending plan adopted, so.
Yeah, if we don't adopt a budget today, we're probably going to have to meet next week at another special meeting.
So I'll amend that motion, that we defer this for a week.
You're moving to defer this for a week? Is there?
That particular.
Well, we've got two motions on the floor now.
Well, last time we did this.
But this is, okay, I, Council?
Thank you. As the city manager said, I think this is the process you have used in the past to narrow down the budget proposals. So in this instance, although it's awkward for the city clerk to record it in the minutes, you generally have used a motion to receive and file, had debate and discussion under that, then dealt with the various motions and proposals for the budget, and then done a final vote on the receive and file.
Okay, okay. So we would vote on the various motions.
So I'd like to move to defer item 10 on report back eight. Until a week from today.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Councilmember Euler. So the motion is to defer any vote on the pension funding options four and five, rather than to vote tonight? Okay. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
My light was actually, I wanted to talk about something else.
Okay.
Prior to that.
Okay.
But I can go ahead and talk to this as well. While this may be uncomfortable options on four and five for us to have a discussion here, but I think we need to be, we're here tonight to do our work. And I think that we ought to at least discuss. I appreciate the fact that we want to maybe have more time on this and not do this again until, until next week. But I think that I'd rather see that come out of the receiving file because I think we're going through receiving file questions right now in the report backs, and that that should be handled separately. And for me, you know, depending, you know, not considering where I'm going to vote on either one of those, I think that they ought to at least be talked about tonight, to be able to be on the floor tonight for those that may want to vote a certain way or however, and I don't know how that is. But I think to delay those two only delays the process in this budget piece. And I guess my other comment that I was going to come back to was a question for the city manager to go back to the receiving file question. So I don't know if you want to do that now or kind of keep it on this issue and then we'll come back to this.
I think we need to speak to, there's a motion on the floor to defer.
All right, so I'll keep it to that and then we'll come back to the other.
Right.
Thank you.
So does anyone else want to speak to the deferral? Member Valpula?
Madam Mayor and City Manager, if we are deferring this motion, does that mean we are deferring all the other motions that are listed, like the 317, 354?
If you defer these items tonight, you can't act on approving a budget, a property tax levy ordinance, or a bond tax abatement ordinance. You'll have to defer everything along with that until such time as the council has come to closure on what the final spending plan is that you'd like to recommend.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have my light on for questions on report backs, but I do want to comment on this motion. I think it's premature. We haven't fully discussed these other options yet, and I think we were all, came prepared to discuss them and potentially vote on them. I think, I guess I'm just, I would rather not defer it at this point because I thought that's always been our plan, that tonight would be the vote.
Looks like we're going to vote on it. Councilmember Grab? Oh, go ahead.
Did we, did we vote on the motion to receive and file?
No.
We haven't voted on that yet, so that is still pending. I don't think, to me, a motion to defer, making motions, just doesn't seem appropriate at this juncture since we're still talking about the budget, similar to what Councilman Ruck Regal stated.
Council?
I would have to ask the clerk, but I don't recall, at least in the last two budget sessions that I've sat through, where there's actually been, as part of the budget discussion, underneath the motion to receive and file, a motion to defer any items at this point when a vote was anticipated. So I don't think it's improper because this is the process the council has used in the past. But I think if there is a question about whether or not it should be continued, then you could go forward with the vote on the motion to defer and see how the votes fall, and then continue or not continue the discussion.
Foundation is that we go forth to vote on the motion to defer?
Yes, Your Honor.
There's a motion to defer, it's been seconded. Councilmember Grab?
I'm always willing to support another councillor's motion if there is a rationale that's given that makes sense. And absent that, I'd have to vote no to defer. I agree with councillors Ruck Regal and Jensen that there's no harm in continuing to discuss. That's how I've done it in the past.
Seeing no more lights, the motion is to defer. Please cast your ballots. That motion fails with seven, Naze Ali, Allen, Grab, Jackson, Jensen, Euler, and Ruck We still have a motion to receive and file, we're still in discussions on that. And Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Great. One additional question, I think, for City Manager. In the past, where we anticipated that we weren't going to be filling as many positions as we would have liked, because I agree with Councilmember Grab, that we've got, we've got a number that for years we've been trying to get to, which really is the number that we really need to be able to have. We have sort of zeroed out those positions, in essence, and allocated those dollars in other places to sort of kind of come up with a balanced budget. Is that correct?
That is correct. We've done that in the past.
I have a problem doing that, and I'll tell you why on this. I think we've got a chief who has made a lot of relationships, and he's building a lot of, a lot of relationships with our community. And meeting with him in just a couple of times, I see the excitement that he's got to be able to work with this department. And I think that, as Councilmember Grab has said, and I agree with him on this, that what we do here show our values as a city. And for us to take away funds from the police department, send a message to anybody who they would be recruiting, that we may or may not restore the funds in there that are ultimately needed. And I think that we need to give every advantage because it's a very competitive market out there to be able to find recruits. And I would not want to be the city. And I would not want to be the city that has a tagline on there that they have cut, even though it may be perfectly logical and we may not need those funds till the fall. But I also believe that if anybody can actually start recruits early because they can find them, because when they talk about the city of Peoria, I believe our department can do that. And so I won't be supporting not funding the police department to where we said because I think it sends a message that we're not going to get these recruits until the very time that we need them. And I would rather set out the bar that we've got the funds, let's fill those positions when we find them, and let's be able to be, one, saying this to the community as well. I can't see automatically assuming that we don't need those funds, and I won't be on the record to be able to cut the police department from anything that they need right now.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could, I had a question on the budget analysis that I think was from... I'm not sure which Report Back. It's the long one. You gave us details on the entire budget, and I did notice we have a lot of the taxes separated out that the city gets, like the amusement tax, the hotel, the liquor tax, video gaming. Do we not have... Do we not get any specific tax for cannabis? I mean, I saw that we do have a portion of the state, but that's only 100,000...
We have one cannabis retailer in town with two locations. At the direction of the Illinois Department of Revenue, we are not showing that sales tax. They do not want us to show that sales tax publicly until there are more retailers in the state, so it's folded into our home rule sales tax.
Okay, so just lumped in with that. But in the future, will we start separating it out?
As soon as we start seeing more retailers in town.
Okay, I guess I don't quite understand that logic, but I...
It's the logic from the state. It's not our logic. We're doing what the... We are complying with the state's requirement that we fold this into our home rule sales tax.
Okay, can you tell us what that amount is?
No.
Really? Okay. Because my understanding is it's fairly substantial. Could that have... And could that be part of the reason why we're receiving a lot more sales tax than we thought we would?
No.
Okay.
Internet sales are what's driving our sales tax increases.
Okay, okay. And then if I may jump on and piggyback off of Counselor Ruckregal and Grab, I understand where you're coming from, Counselor Riegenbach, and I appreciate the creativity and the thought behind the proposal. But especially with what we're facing right now, with the amount of violence and the crime, like Counselor Ruckregal said, I think it sends a bad message if we cut this money out. I think we need to stand up and push for a stronger and bigger police force and deal with the issues that we're faced with. So I'm not in favor of option four, at least at this point. Thank you.
A question for City Manager and Legal. In our past budget discussions, we've had motions as part of our deliberation. We haven't always had a receiving file on the front end. Sometimes we've had that after the discussion. Where should the motions fit in now that we've had a receiving file on the floor first?
I think you've done it both ways, from my understanding. So there isn't exactly a correct Roberts Rules of Order. These are not listed as agenda items because ultimately they are all deliberation and discussion and recommendations to the city manager. It's the final budget vote that is your action item. So in looking at past budget sessions and even looking at this one, I believe it could be done either way.
So they can be incorporated into this even though we have the receiving file on the floor now? We can still take the motions?
Correct. Now, Roberts Rules of Order will tell you technically there should only ever be one motion on the floor at any time, but it has been this council's practice to do their budget deliberations in this manner, where there has been either no motion on the floor and directional motions, we'll call them, have been made to the city manager, or there has been a receiving file motion on the floor and the same motions were made.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. I was thumbing through, and maybe the city manager can refresh my memory. I was just trying to find out if we had listed somewhere what our annual overtime costs typically are for the police officers. And second question, follow-up for the chief, is, you know, even though we wouldn't get all officers on board, would... I don't know if we were paying an enormous amount in overtime, but if we could bring those officers on board within maybe a couple of years' time, would that offset the issue with overtime? And how does this affect overall morale? I know typically when you've got folks working overtime, overtime, at some point, burnout sets in.
I think Director Crowdie has the number, so I'll turn the floor over to him.
Absolutely. In terms of overtime in the police department, in 2020, it was a little bit over $2.8 million.
$2.8 million.
We're trending this year to be close to $2.3 million is where we're trending for 2021.
Chief, what would this do? I mean, if we, you know, I'm just assuming within the next budget cycle, we would probably be... Would we be able to get all these officers on board? And with that, you know, typically departments like to kind of keep the overtime cost at a minimum. And how would this affect morale, balance things out?
I think if we're able to get these 30 officers and have them on the street by 2023 on their own, it will definitely improve morale in the sense that, yes, we have officers that are working extended amount of hours, they're mandated to come back in. So we are seeing that, and that's one of the complaints that we hear on a daily. You know, we're obviously doing some other things internally to help alleviate that as well. It's not only the 30 bodies, but some other things of, you know, getting the online reporting in place, redistricting, and going from four shifts to three shifts to have more bodies. But yes, it would provide the opportunity for us to do other preventive and proactive things and have officers have some time to really hopefully get a break and be refreshed.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I don't know if this is for chief or the city manager, but first of all, let me be clear that my intention is not to defund the police in any sense of the word. My brain starts looking at the numbers, and it's like, if these guys aren't starting until May and we've got five months of salary. So help me understand this because maybe I have misinterpreted the data, but I thought they could not start until they went to the academy. Unless they came from another department.
They're still at the academy. They're obviously being paid while they're at academy, and there's that training portion of it. And when they come out of the academy, there's another four months of training there, and then that's when they'll be on their own essentially.
But the 10 officers slatted for the May Academy, could they start in March?
No, sir.
So 10 slatted for September then cannot start in July either.
That's correct.
So respectfully, I just want to wrap my arms around the fact that if those are the hard start dates, why would we set aside the salary for all those? How many months did you say? 120 months or what?
It totals up to be about 120 total months. It's about $600,000.
I'm not reducing the force. I'm committed to hiring 30 new officers this year. I'm just saying that the money that's not going to be spent for the months when they're not working be used for the pension. So I'm still hoping to discussion here because I don't want to tie his hands and I don't want to send the wrong message, but let's be sure that we're thinking this through because if those January, May, and September are hard dates, then it almost seems foolish to set aside the money for five months with... I mean, what am I missing here, folks? Help me out. Thank you.
Councilmember Grab?
Well, I would like to be able to help you on that. Why would we select the line item for police to be fungible and to start taking money out of it, or assuming we're not going to spend it, with the type of attrition that you just heard we're going to have? We have budgets. We establish budgets with amounts for various items. And if we're going to start viewing all these items as being capable of being raided or stripped out because, gosh, we've got cash flow here, we don't really have a budget. We really don't. So when we allocate money for the police department, it should be there, period. And it doesn't matter whether it's the police. You could do this for any one of a number of other line items if you wanted to. You could say, well, there's so much money there, we're never going to spend it all this year, so let's strip some out. Why would you select the police of all places? It's beyond my comprehension. Manager, I know that Councilman Ruckregal is always interested in coming to solutions that make sense, but so am I, and so are you. And I think one of the things that we talked about last time that failed to pass got close, but it doesn't count being close. We had a 5-5 vote was number four here, and that was amending the proposed city of Peoria biennial budget to reduce the police and fire pension contributions and set aside. By now, we have here tonight a different motion with some dollars changed, 1.840, and some change of 2022 fund balance to fund pension obligations in 2022 and 2023. Was this an attempt, Manager? You and I have had this discussion to thread this needle of the need to have funds to run our great city and yet also be responsible as it relates to this god-awful deadlines, Councilman Ruckregal, which we have, and Counselor Riegenbach, to meet in terms of our pension contributions. Tell me what your thinking was behind it.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, what we attempted to do here was to find a way to reduce our pension contributions, what amounts to about $1.1 million a year. That's still over both the Department of Insurance and the actuaries' minimum statutory requirements. So we're putting in more than we're required to. And then looking at the fact that this year we're going to see a significant amount of revenue coming in that we didn't anticipate and using that to cover the remainder of the needs that we have in our public safety pension funds for '22 and '23. I will readily admit it is a stopgap measure that gets us... It does give us two years to move forward with this, but this does take advantage of the fact that we have these revenues coming in right now that we can set aside in the general fund. Our general fund contributions are still over $14 million combined in '22 and '23 that needs to be pulled out in order to make our pension contributions. So that's doing that. And what it doesn't do is it doesn't address the staffing issues as we look at staffing at this point in time and looking at the need to deliver services. We deliver services with people, with police officers, with firefighters, with code enforcement officers, with public works employees, with the people here in City Hall. That's how we deliver services to the community is by having the staff to do that. When we got down to 615 people, it was very difficult for us to deliver those services. So this budget recommends that we move that number back up closer to 653 positions in order to be able to deliver services for our community.
Now, I say this not to be provocative, but let's just think about it. We could save millions and millions of dollars and have to pay for police, fire, and roads, code enforcement. But then again, who'd want to live here? As well just have Chief Escheveria close the bridges because nobody's going to want to be here. So I get it, and I think the manager has tried, and I'm dressing my fellow counselors on this as well. I think he's tried to thread the needle with the needs of our city, huge public safety needs. And I think it's responsible, and we do have monies coming in which will help be an offset for some things. And so that's why I would have absolutely no problem supporting fourth option tonight and not feeling that I'm being irresponsible as relates to the pension obligation. Because I know it's there, you know it's there, we all know it's there, but we have to fund the rest of the city. We just can't shut the bridges down. So that's my thinking on it, counsel. And, you know, if we don't have six people to do number four and we don't have six people to do number three, well, we've got to come up with something. But I happen to think the manager came up with a pretty good suggestion for us. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, looking at options four and five, the narrative on option five said, coupled with expense reductions, a pension fund would have a similar balance as option four. So are you looking at 621,000 of expense reductions outside of...
No. What I meant was the expense reductions in the pension fund. That's $25,000 to send the bills out in 2022 and $25,000 in 2023.
So you're not talking about the big...
No.
I thought maybe there was a secret here that I wasn't aware of, so...
No, no.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I said last week, we have a conundrum of managing short-term needs but also trying to maintain a long-term vision and sustainability of our city. And the fight is not easy right now. I do appreciate the creativity of my colleague, Councilman Riegenbach, you know, as I said talking to you earlier, but I do not like the optics or the message that it sends by reducing our police department's budget. And I do think option five, and Councilman Grab, I think you meant option five, it's in the parentheses there, is the best middle-of-the-road approach at this time. We know we have more work to do as we try to lobby, you know, against the pension obligations that we currently have, but I think option five allows us to maintain basic core services for our constituents without making any reductions or cuts to our public safety personnel. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. At a point where we have a record amount of expenses and revenues planned into this budget to lower the amount that we're paying on a growing debt obligation when we know that we're headed for a fiscal brick wall with these pension obligations, to me is the complete definition of fiscal mismanagement. I can't even understand the argument to say that we have more money but we're going to pay less on our bills. That is absolutely crazy to me and unacceptable. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to disagree with my... I'm going to disagree with my distinguished colleague over here to my right. I think along with Councilman Grab and Councilman Allen that option five is the best option that we have. I mean, we do have, you know, close to, is it $2 million in excess revenue this year that we were not expecting due to the sales tax revenue from the online sales that we now receive, but also the property replacement tax share that we were not receiving for a number of years from the state and our share of the state income tax. Is that, that's correct? I see you nodding your head.
Yes, those state shared revenues are coming in considerably higher than we anticipated.
So I think, you know, we can use those revenues to bring back the fire engine, which we are now doing in this budget, adding 30 police officers and adding all the road projects with the help of some of the money that we're getting and will be getting from the federal government. I think it's our best option. So with that, I'm going to move to approve option five.
Okay. That?
Sure. I move to lower the pension contribution by 2.2 million, eliminate the pension fee expenses, set aside 1.84 million of 2021 excess revenues to cover pension obligations in 2022 and 2023.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Additional discussion? Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I've heard several times that we have extra money, so we're going to pay less on our debt. Again, I do not understand how that makes any sense whatsoever. So the years where we have less money, then we're going to pay more on our debt? Come on. We clearly haven't come up with the right solution here and sorted out what the option is for a path forward. This is ridiculous kicking the can down the road to say that we're going to pay more money later when we have less money. We know where our financial situation is headed. We have one-time money here, and so now that we have extra money, we're going to pay less on our debt obligations. Not acceptable. Thank you.
Councilmember Velpula?
Madam Mayor, first of all, I would like to, you know, I wanted to apologize for my ignorance, not knowing the procedural way of how to vote on an item last week. So the purpose of my rationale for not voting is that I haven't had enough information. And respectfully, I'll have to say, I've been chatting with the city manager on Friday and yesterday, and now around 2 o'clock, I get an email, which I didn't even see. Now I am asked to vote on that. I understand that it is necessary for a person to vote on things, but again, I also understand that we have to vote out of consciousness. So I am not, first things, I learn everything on the floor rather than knowing it offhand because I was there yesterday. I was there with the manager, and I have no clue that it's coming. And I got this email at 2 o'clock today, and unfortunately, I have a day job, and I have never looked at my email. And when I came at 5 o'clock, I was looking at the emails, then I found that there is a option four, option five. So whole week I was struggling with the three options. Now I've been presented with two more, and now the motion is on floor, and I have to vote on it. Unless I, until I understand this, I am not comfortable voting on this. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seems like we just really voted on this the last time, and all we did, and we heard the idea come on here in the council floor, and it just didn't sound like the spirit of good discussion, which was, well, just change the number a little bit and bring it back into the next meeting. That time, I think, was meant to be a dollar, and maybe that was a little facetious, but it has now come back, and I think it's about $100,000 that's different. But it's basically the same motion that was voted on last time. So maybe it'll pass tonight, maybe it won't. For me, I think we've got to also look at the information that we've been given over the years. I've got all my audits. I'm one of those geeks who actually reads the audit page by page and goes through, and I don't know, maybe it's something that I like, I don't know. But in there, always buried, is the fact that our unfunded pension liability is our biggest problem and that we have got to find a way. And I think people say, well, if we can't fix it, then we shouldn't make any move towards it. It's like the person who has a credit card and decides, well, I'm only going to pay the minimum because I'll never be able to pay off the whole amount. But you do it in chunks, and you pay off because it's the right thing to do, and little by little. And I think back in those times that we were asking for help because we knew that we were good, we were going to be solvent, and we looked at our local banks and we asked for help, and they sent us letters. And in those letters, and a couple of them, and I wish I would have brought them along if I knew that we were going to get into this part of the conversation tonight, but they basically said, because we have a history of not handling or making, as a council, action to handle the unfunded debt pension liability, and that we say a good game, we say we're going to go for it, we say we're going to pay a little bit more on it, but then we don't. And then I think about my row at my office where I've got all of the city budgets from the times that I've been around, sitting around here on city council. And in there, in every single one of them, is a note from the city manager and the narrative talking about that our biggest issue facing the city is our unfunded pension liabilities. For me, and I'm not telling anybody else how to vote, I can't vote for a continuation of the same, which is, well, let's not do it. Evidently, it was important because if it was not important to be able to pay the amount that was put in the original budget that came to us in the draft, then I would say maybe we'd look at it a little bit differently. But that was the number that was suggested, I think for a reason, from our city manager. Maybe it's because there was an extra $2 million in there, maybe it wasn't. But we've gone ahead and made other expenditures, which some of them are very, very valid, and I think, you know, we've talked about those. But for this item here, and having seen how small changes can actually make a big difference in the city financial long term, and I was talking to my colleague, my colleague right next door to me, Councilmember Seer, and we talked about the fact, and I hope you don't mind me mentioning this, that
Wait, no.
Well, and I hope you talk about it as well, that the hard changes we made last year, hard as they were, but you got to take them in context because we didn't know what the rest of the year was going to be like, actually helped our bond rating, which does affect us long term. Not only be stable, it'd go up. I don't doubt that this is going to pass tonight. And I'm saying from my vantage point, knowing what I do, knowing how other people are looking at us, knowing about what we are going to decide that we need to do and should do, this is not the thing that I can vote for. I don't berate those who make a different decision. I would ask them to go back and look at that history of years and years of that being something that we've been told we have to change and do something about. Doesn't mean we fix it. It doesn't mean that there's one solution to it. But again, we've got to take a step down that journey. Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no more lights, I would ask that we cast our ballots. Fails with six names, Seer, Kelly, Euler, Rigenbach, Ruck Regal, and Velpula. Now that we're into motions, there are actually, well, there's two left for consideration that were listed by the city manager. There's number two, there's number three. I think Councilmember Jackson, you were speaking to number two?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'd like to put forth a motion to amend the proposed City of Peoria 2022-2023 biennial budget for a grant match from the South Village TIFT of $150,000 as a grant match for PC, CEO, and the Federal Home Loan Bank Affordable Housing Program is listed.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a motion, but I just got a question for our city manager. Last year, last couple of budgets, actually, you and I had, I was laughing in war. You were not smiling, you were just smiling. Tell us again, I was very surprised, my colleague, Ms. Jensen, I know you know your numbers. Tell me about, what do you have in the budget for revenue from cannabis?
Well, what we had budgeted for cannabis revenues was a couple hundred thousand dollars. This budget, we anticipated about $400,000. We're getting the cannabis local use tax, and that's being shown as a separate line. I think we have that identified as a budget figure. But because we only have two sellers right now, or two locations right now, it's the same company, Trinity, that's selling cannabis, the Department of Revenue has instructed us to not show that dollar separate from the budget because there's only one seller, and it's sharing economic information about one retailer that they don't want to have. So.
So I think everybody knows, though, and I'm sure my colleague knows, I mean, their success has been incredible. When do you, do you have any idea when we'll be able to show some type of revenue? Because eventually, I know when you're projecting, you had a five-year projection, eventually in the millions of dollars, correct?
Well, I think what
Year five?
I'm not, I'm not, the growth has been strong this past year. We're seeing that in the local use tax growth in terms of cannabis use tax. So that number is up probably 150% from where it was last year. So if it continues that trend, that'd be fantastic. I doubt that it will. I think at some point in time, it's going to, it's going to level off, and as more retailers get in, the question is, is that, is that the full universe of people that are smoking or have just been and using adult-use cannabis? Is it just going to those two locations? Or if we add five, are we going to see growth, or are we just going to see that spread out? And we don't know yet until we see more retailers coming into the market.
So that is for local money. State money, I mean, the numbers are actually much larger. Will we get in the future a share of the sales for the state of Illinois?
We have a, we have a 3% local cannabis retailers tax that we've imposed. We're collecting it. We can't, we can't tell you what that is yet right now.
But that's our 3%. Overall, I think we're at 18%, correct?
Correct.
So 15% goes to the state. Are we, will we get a portion of that 15% down the road?
They're rolling that into a grant program so that they're trying to roll out some different grant funding for that. So we'll have to apply for grants for that, those dollars.
Here's a, I got another question. It's kind of a bad question because we didn't get a chance to talk to you, Mr. Manager, but the same thing with the grant for the Civic Center, isn't it? I mean, this money coming to us in Civic Center is not supposed to be funded through a casino in Chicago that has not even been built yet. Is that a correct statement?
The, oh, the 25 million, it's part of the state's Rebuild Illinois Bond Program. So one of the, one of the bond proceeds that they were looking at was from the Chicago Casino, but if the state has the funds on hand and they're able to allocate those funds, they can bring those forward. We do have other projects that are, that are anticipated out of that same pot of money for the city. We have $3 million for Pioneer Parkway is one of those projects that's included in there. Main Street, we have $25 million. We have $15 million for the Riverfront and $10 million for MacArthur Highway. So there's a number of projects that are in that same, that same bucket from the state that we're hoping that we'll hear from them sometime very soon.
So I got a last unfair question for you, Mr. Manager. You and I had discussions before, and we talked about the budget being really a moving target. Is that a correct statement?
It's always a moving target, yes.
Okay, so it's a moving target because the last five years I've been here, or just come to year five, you have the ability, the authority to move money around, correct? Every year, we get, I mean, my question to you, which I'm pretty sure you would know the answer, how many changes on the average do we make to our budget in any calendar year?
There's, you have, you have budget amendments that come forward throughout the year when we receive grants or we receive other dollars that are coming in. There may be a need for us to make an expenditure, whether it's an emergency expenditure or just a regular expenditure. So we probably have 10 or 15 budget amendments during the course of the year, every given year. What you don't have is, and there is some spending authority where we can move money in the, between the department, between funds, but I can't necessarily move funds from one department to another in the general fund, for example. So that's something that we can't do. So that's why you see the budget as it's laid out the way that it is.
I just want to make sure all our people listening tonight understand that really it is a moving target, and there's at least one or two changes on the average per month to our budget. And so some of their discussion, long discussion we're having really are irrelevant because there's going to be a lot of changes in the budget in '22 and '23.
I mean, the only thing I would, I would add to that is it's relevant because we have to adopt an annual spending plan.
Correct.
You know, in order to go into January 1 with that fiscal year starting, that we have that spending plan in place.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the proposed City of Peoria 2022-2023 biennial budget to reduce police and fire pension contributions, reduce the police budget in 2022 by $621,000 and set aside $1,219.39 of the 2021 fund balance to fund pension obligations in '22 and 2023.
This is option four. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Although I would prefer not to go into the police budget, as I mentioned earlier, because I think public safety and the police are very important to this city, and I support them 100%, but given the logic and the discussion that we've heard here tonight, I think that this is a good compromise. I commend Councilor Rigenbach for coming up with it, and I will be supporting it since we couldn't get a majority to support option five. Thank you.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I think this is just an extension of what we just voted down, except worse, because now we're saying that the only department that we're going to go after is the police department when it comes to reductions, the department that is seeing record homicides. How do you explain that to the public? I won't even recap what I just said about delaying the pension payments, but now we're going to say that we're, we jammed through voting to spend what I think equates to about a million and a half bucks a year on fire to add a truck, but we're going to wipe $600,000 or whatever this amounts to out of the police department when we have a record homicide number. What sense does this make? I mean, even if we didn't need the $600,000 in the police department, I would think there are $600,000 worth of really good options out there to figure out how we fight so how we fight some crime in this city. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, actually, I turned my mic, or my request off, but I was going to say, with less passion, but maybe that's not the best way, what Councilman Euler just said. I would further say, however, I haven't been here that long. I'm in my third year, but I've been an observer for many years, and it seems to me that every budget that we have does the same thing. It says, "We can't afford what we're doing, but let's just kick it down the road one more year." And I think this budget is no exception. We're not taking any kind of a long view, we're not talking about how to really get reorganized, or start doing some things very, very differently. We're just going to keep going until the pension issue and other issues, and lower and lower and lower assessed values eat us alive. We talk about why people will leave. Well, people will leave because public service, public, public safety is going down the tubes, or they will leave because they're being taxed to death. And the way we're going, they're gonna leave for both reasons. We're not taking strategic moves here to change the way we do things. I'll be, I'll be voting against this particular motion, because it avoids answering the question. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Rick Riegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting this motion, just because I've, I've got to replay in my mind what the chief told us from, from that podium not too long ago. And we've got record homicides. But it's not, and it's not only the homicides that we should be talking about, because people don't leave a city for many reasons, but they do leave if they don't feel safe. And that's a decision that they don't come back and change the next week, or the next year. Because once they move, they move. But we do have record homicides. And the part of, that's only part of the story. The other part of the story is, last week, and I'm sure this is increasing, and we had 5,600 bullets that went somewhere that didn't strike somebody. Think about how many that is a day in our city. We had a carjacking up at a very popular grocery store up on Sheridan. We had a postal worker who, who had an altercation in one of our heritage neighborhoods. And, and the stories can go on and on. This is why people, and businesses, small businesses especially, because they're easier to move, will decide where and where they want to be. To be able to send a message that we cut the police department, I will not be a part of it. Because we have in this budget, a lot of dollars for what we don't know what we're really buying. Well, we'll put it in there, and then we'll have a program, or we'll have something else that'll come in, and we'll fill it in, and we'll do that later. I believe in our police chief. And I believe that give him the money, and if he doesn't spend it, because the recruit's coming a little bit later, he'll find another appropriate place to be able to spend it, because he's forward-thinking on what he wants to be able to do. I want to give him the ability. I believe in what he wants to do, and, and I would rather have those dollars allocated to him and his department, for them to come up with the solutions that they want to have, because we are asking our police officers to do more with less. And we've, we've had that discussion around here, that the discussion has happened nationally, and it's very true, that the situations that our police officers have to do with, if that's having to answer mental health crises, you know, multiple things that they're having to go into, that they maybe did years ago, but it was handled differently. And we want our police officers to be able to do the best they can. And they do do a great job. But to sit here and cut them for $620,000 sends the wrong message. We've got other, other blind items in here, where we just have a number put in, and no real program that's defined for us to know what it's for. But yet, we're not looking at even trimming some of those to be able to save this. The other part of this is the same exact, on, on delaying some pension payments, but, but this one, for me, I look in and I focus on, what are we saying to our police department? The people that are working 24/7 to protect us as a city, that's what I hear more and more and more, much more than, than anything else right now, is about safety. The safety that they have in their neigh, and it's, it's, it's in neighborhoods now, where people thought it never had to happen to them. It's not isolated. If we took a heat map of those 5,600 shots, it would be all over the city. We are kidding ourselves that this isn't the main issue we should be talking about, is how we, how we handle this appropriately, and with our community partners. But to, but to sit here and cut our police department, because all of a sudden, we figured out, in a matter of 25 minutes, that they may be hired a little bit later, what it says is, to those people who are applying for those jobs, who can apply anywhere that they want to, because every metropolitan area is looking, every small town is looking, I'll go where I know that I have the funds, and where they value, the police department. I can't vote for this.
Councilmember Rick Riegel? I'm sorry, there I go again. Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just, my head's a little bit spinning right now, that when I asked for the report back on this, I was viscerated by my colleagues for, for the ignorance of this, and now, all of a sudden, the same people are saying they want to vote for it. So, I asked for the report back for information purposes, not endorsing it one way or the other. So, one question, though, and to Councilman Grab's point from earlier, perhaps this isn't just about the start date. Mr. Manager, could you clarify, or Chief, probably, can that $621,000 that we have set aside for the salaries, could that be used for overtime in the months preceding the start date?
Yes, that would be an allowable, allowable expense. I would allow, authorize him to move those dollars around, for those purposes. We've done that in the past with, with other personnel expenses in other departments.
So while the, the new officers could not start until January, May, and September, we could enhance the police on the street with overtime, using those same dollars?
Perhaps.
You just said yes a second ago. I mean.
You could do, yes. I mean, that's, it's one option you could do.
Well, then that brings me back to not wanting to defund the police, clearly, that's not our intent across the board. So, we've scratched option five. This is option four, which is problematic, it sounds like, for a lot of us. Option three from last week was voted down, so I, I mentioned option one, but that cuts 4.13 million over the next two years, and that didn't get a rousing reception. So, Mr. Manager, look at option two with me, if you would, from last week. I mean, perhaps that's the, the, that, that cuts expenses, I, I just happen to have it here, it cuts expenses in '22 by $976,000, and, and a like amount in 2023, so if we're using 621, this is another 50% on that. I, I think option two needs a little, a little examination before we move forward, because we need to have the options on the table. And this was, this was on the table, it didn't get a lot of attention, but looking at the options that have come forward since then, I, I would like to see that explored, so I don't know if we need to vote down this motion, and then ask for a report back on that, or what the, what's that?
What is option, can you read it, or is it just in numbers?
This was from last week, and it said, "The second option would be to lower the pension contribution for police and fire to a level that it's, it's the same cut in pension, 2.2 million, but this adjustment, it would still be over the Illinois Department of Statutory Contribution Level, and reduce expenses, 2.27 million over '22 and '23." The adjustment would lower pension contributions by 1.06. The council would need to reduce expenses in 2022 by $976,000, and in 2022 by $953,000. This would likely mean that 11 positions would be, need to remain unfilled within the general fund over the next two years, to reduce spending to transfer additional funds to cover pension. So, this would give us a chance to look at a lot of things, before we make that final decision.
Except for police. Because you've, you've made it clear, you don't want to cut the largest budget that we have in the general fund. So, I mean, let's, let's put that out there. What you're talking about is saying to the rest of the departments in the general fund, the rest of the departments in the city, "We're going to cut your budget, but we're not going to cut police." I, I just, that's fine, I just want to get that out. I mean, there is another option, and the, the other option could be that you just simply take 4.4 million, or $4 million of one-time revenues from this year, and use that and apply that towards the two years of pension contributions that you need to make. That's one other option that you have. This is one-time revenue that's coming in, will be at the higher, at the higher pension contribution level for the next couple of years, but that, that is one, one option that you can do, right now.
We've got a big hole. Councilman, can you, can you wrap up?
Yeah, I just, just repeat, if you would just repeat what he suggested, then I'm done. Thank you. Why, did you say about, where would that 4 million?
Right now, we've anticipated and projected almost $10 million more revenue in the general fund than expense. Simply just take that money out of the general fund this year, and apply it towards 2022 and 2023. It's one-time revenue that we're receiving because of personal property replacement tax, income tax, and sales tax. Set that aside, make the pension payments, and go forward with it. It means, it means you won't have a 20% fund balance reserve, you'll probably have less than that, but you've made your pension contributions.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got a big hole. We've got a 2 million, I mean, we, we don't have a public safety pension fee after December 31st, so we have a big hole of 2 million per year. That could affect safety jobs. It could affect other jobs as well, but it could affect also police jobs, not just fire jobs. It could affect jobs that we're talking about, trying to protect tonight. The city manager has thrown out another solution, although it would only be for two years, but it buys us two years, and that would be to take sales revenues for 2021 in the amount of $4 million to cover those, that, that big hole that we have. Sounds like a good strategy. Use your, your button. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the, the sentiments of my colleague, Councilman Riegenbach. We are just faced with some tough options. I understand the, the circumstances that our city is in right now with record homicides, so by no means am I saying that we need less police officers. I just consider this scenario, based off of the context that was brought forward, with Councilman Riegenbach's suggestion, and then based off some additional conversation. Now, however, I was not aware that we could use that funding for overtime for our police officers, so that was not a caveat that I did have, and that is a game-changer for me. So I would like to withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Do you have to see a second, withdraw?
Oh, okay. He withdrew his motion, and we have a second. Need to vote on that?
She just has to withdraw it.
She just withdraw, withdrew her second.
He withdrew.
Okay. It's withdrawn.
Not on a withdrawal.
So is there any interest in this new consideration? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I think that this last option that was just thrown out, sounds like it could be the best solution with what we're faced with right now, and we're, that will allow us to preserve the public safety jobs, not cut the 11 positions that have been added for fire, not cut the police budget, and all the other things that are in our budget, including all the road projects and all the other things. So, I don't know, I'm happy to make that motion now, but I don't know, I think the council might prefer to have it come back for the next meeting, but I know some of us want to make our decisions tonight. So I guess I, I would ask the, the rest of the council maybe to give us some input. I mean, if, if you would like me to make that motion, I can. Because it
Are there any questions related to this proposal?
I guess one of my questions is, why wasn't this proposed before? I thought that, I mean, this has been my logic, let's use the extra revenue that we're getting with the sales tax and the property placement.
Simply to, to, you have the most flexibility if that money sits in the general fund.
I, I'm sorry.
You have the most flexibility if that money sits in the general fund, and if you transfer that money over, you're using it to pay your pension obligations. And so, knowing that we, we beefed up in our recommended budget, the pension contributions to a higher level than what's required, we made the recommendation that we pull that back down and reduce that dollar amount. That, that, that's the only reason, is to, to give you budgetary flexibility with dollars in the general fund. You're still getting to that same location, and you're using the one-time revenues, you're just now using 4 million of it that would be allocated towards paying for the, the future pension obligations of '22 and '23.
So, out of maybe all the options that we've talked about here tonight, that one seems the most responsible. We'll be paying our pension obligations, we'll be beefing up our workforce, so we can provide the services that everybody expects. So that makes a lot of sense to me, I'm very supportive of it.
Councilmember Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I like the idea of Councilwoman Beth Jensen. It's good that we have a lot of options that we can shop around, but again, when we are It's good that we have a lot of options that we can shop around, but again, when we are, in my opinion, I should say, when I'm supposed to make a decision, I think I would really like to sit down and talk to people, talk to the manager about the ramifications, rather than I just go on the fly. So, if, if this is acceptable, maybe we have six listed options. Maybe we'll get all the six listed and see which one is the best that we pick it. Apparently, we need to pick something, but again, lack of information, clarity, and what, who, who gets affected, which processes are affected, all these things came on the floor today. Now, everybody is clear of what each option will do to each department, so I would really say that maybe we can take this data, simmer it down, and maybe we could see if, if there is a possibility of next week coming back on this and then take a final vote. That's, I think it's, it's appropriate for me. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of order. I can't remember. Do we still have a receiving file on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. So, can we vote on this and then just, just move on to the next item, and maybe we need more discussion like Mr. Valpula just said. But anyway, I'd like to, to, to vote on the receiving file if possible, so we can move on. Thank you.
Well. Yeah. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is a bit confusing, because as I stated before, generally, we would only want one motion on the floor at any given time. However, if you look at how the council has handled this in the past, there has always been an agenda item to receive and file the biennial budget, although I think in the past, the word "discussion" was also used in the title. So what you're receiving and filing is the budget discussion. So the subsidiary motions that are made within the motion to receive and file are, are appropriate in, in this particular case. This has been your process in the past.
I understand that we, we have voted, or had discussion now on all the, the options that we have in front of us, and now we're down to having new discussion. And I think it'd be a mistake for us not to have real discussion and really talk about, because I, I believe personally, I believe there's other ways also that we can find the $2 million. So, so I just want to, I mean, I, I just think we need to move on, because everybody had two or three times to talk about it, and obviously, I think what we're, we're, we're heading right now is for hopefully a last meeting next Tuesday. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I just want to remind everyone that there was a motion that was voted on last week relative to a water company. Study and savings for that that wasn't provided in advance. It was, it was provided the night of, and we acted on that, took a motion on that. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Yes, and, and thank you actually for that reminder, because I was just thinking about that same thing, that, that was a perfect example of something that we didn't anticipate that would come up, but, but did, and I think we had to deal with it at that point. We've got a new idea and a new motion here, a new idea, maybe a new idea or a different idea that's thrown out here. My question, I think my first question would be for the city manager. City manager, what were those original general fund reserves going to be used for in years three, four, and five?
In, in which years? I'm sorry.
In years three, four, and five. The, the reserves that we set aside to build up that were, didn't they have an anticipated use that you thought in years three, four, and five that they may be drawn down?
Absolutely. You're going to have to be using your reserves to pay for pensions.
And you and I may, may differ a little bit on that, because my, my angst was those reserves really need to be in there and stay in there, because those are, those are, are long-term security to make for sure that we don't have to do massive layouts, and to be using them so quickly. But, but you, you presented a budget and scaled out that there was a real use for those in years three, four, and five. If they're not there for year three, four, and five, that picture looks a lot different.
Absolutely. You're, you're, you're on a collision course in years three, four, and five with having to continue to come back and make budget cuts or revenue increases in order to fund public safety pensions. That's, that's been the essence of what I've been saying in every budget message for the last 10 years.
And, and one of the things that I think you brought over from when you came from the county was this used to be an annual budget, and I think it was under, under your leadership that a biannual budget was brought forward, because it gave you a little bit more runway to sort of be able to look how years connect.
Correct.
And we've pushed that even more, because we're not going out of business at the end of this two-year budget cycle. We intend to be able to still be in business, and people still live here and us provide services, so we got to look, and one of the things I've pushed for is what does it do years three, four, five, six, and seven to be able to help set us up for success? And I, and I think to arbitrarily use those funds early. May get us through. But it's going to put years three and four in a really difficult situation again, because we now have bought a house that we can't afford to live in. Maybe there's more to this if, if, if you bring more data back to it, you're, you're going to know that more, but, but I, I think that we're, we're forward-using funds that are going to be needed for later on. And you keep, you keep reiterating one-time funds, and there's a reason why, because we don't get to replace those again.
Correct.
They're not reoccurring like sales tax or property tax. They're, they're not reoccurring check that comes in from, from the state.
The, the only other option you have then is to cut expenses. But there's been no motions made to cut expenses. There's been no one that has said we need to cut expenses. That's your other option. You, there's, you have one-time revenues that are sitting in the general fund because of the increased tax revenue we've received this year. Someone needs to make a motion to cut expenses.
And I might be putting you on a position here, and if you can't, in your, in your role, please just say I, I can't answer this question, but is, is the reason you didn't have this in one of these options beforehand, because this is not probably a preferred option from your vantage point?
Well, we, we did have this option as option three. Option three was, was to take 1.9 million dollars of one-time revenue from 2021, coupled with a reduction in the pension payments. That, so that is an option that we have.
Okay. Thank you. No more.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to agree with Councilman Seer. I think we have some things to think about and to talk with each other about. And so, I would, I'd be in favor of deferring our final decisions until next week, so I would like to call the question.
Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. We're voting on calling the question. Please cash your ballots. Oh, pardon me, is there a? What?
Yes. In other words, stop debate.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I believe the vote should be on whether or not to end debate and call the question.
Pardon me?
I believe the vote is actually going to be on whether or not the question can be called, because even though that was motioned and seconded, you need a vote, a two-thirds vote by the council in order for the debate to be ended, then you can go back to the motion that's on the floor.
Can you clear, can you clear that light?
Point of order. We need to, we need to vote on closing debate.
You need to. Put your light on.
Put my light on?
Yes. Councilman?
Yes. We need to vote on. Calling the question, and then we vote on the receiving file.
That's what she just said.
Yes.
So what we're voting on is whether we want to continue the, the discussion or dialogue, or whether we want to end it and call the vote on the receiving file. So do you want to continue the debate, or do you want to call the question? Maybe I said it differently.
The official word would be, the vote would be to end discussion and call the question. And so a yes would end the debate. It, it just, on how it said, yeah, it just said a little differently. It, it would be to end the discussion and then call the question.
Voting to end the debate. Please cash your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we are voting to call the question. We're voting to receive and file. Passes unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk?
21-354 is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with request to adopt an ordinance levying the taxes for fiscal year 2022 for municipal purposes for the city of Peoria, Illinois.
Mr. Manager?
Well, in, in light of the, the discussion, I'd ask that we defer this item for a week. To that, to defer this item for one week so that we can come back and, and have this conversation next Tuesday evening.
Okay. We're looking at. Next Tuesday, which I believe is the 22nd.
Correct.
We have a motion to defer one week, moved by Councilmember Grab, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cash your ballots. Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-355 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levy to pay principal of and interest on general obligation corporate purpose bonds of the city of Peoria, Peoria County, Illinois, 2015 Series B, C, and D, 2016 Series C, 2018 Series A, 2020 Series A and B, and 2021 A and B, and the partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on 2016 Series A general obligation bonds in the amount of $220,062. The partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on 2018 Series B general obligation bonds in the amount of $584,114. The partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on 2019 general obligation bonds in the amount of $2,395,705, and the partial abatement of taxes levied to pay principal and interest on 2021 Series C general obligation bonds in the amount of $547,661.
That was a mouthful. Mr. Manager?
Again, I'd ask that we defer this item for one week until we can come back to you.
Is there a motion? Moved by Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilman Member Ruck Regal. Any questions? Cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-356 is a communication with request to adopt a resolution adopting the 2022 and 2023 biennial budget for the city of Peoria.
Okay, looks like we need to defer for one week. Councilmember Reganbuck, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion? Cash your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and town board.
I have one card. Did you receive anything by mail or email?
No, I have not received anything in my office.
Okay. We have Mr. Anthony Wallraven?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the city council. My name is Anthony Wallraven. I live at 1927 West Hudson in Peoria. I am an electronic communications technician and radio operator for the city of Peoria. I work in the Electronic Communications Center, which is just across the street from the police station. In addition to that, I am the secretary of ASME Local 3464, which represents city employees not employed by the Fire Department, Public Works, or the Police Department. I'm here today to express concern about issues that have arisen in the past few weeks between the city and our union. As hopefully all of you know, because you got the emails, our union has requested to meet with city management to discuss COVID-related pay issues concerning our members. A letter that was signed by the entirety of our membership was distributed amongst our membership. It's something that they are interested in talking to the city about. We have sent two requests to the city management, once by our union president, Rhonda Sexton, once by our staff council rep, whose name is Rob Franty, and we have received no response from either of those communications to the city. It's also in my knowledge that the Fire Department Union and the Police Union have sent similar communications to request discussions about this topic, and I've also met with no response. It's interesting what the discussion was kind of about when I came in here. We've heard throughout the past few months how difficult it is to retain people in various city departments, and I have the pleasure of working in a department that is somewhat public safety, in that we are generally the first people that people who are victim of a crime or have a medical emergency talk to. We are staffed to have 32 employees in our department, and we have 24, including management. It is my understanding that we have not been fully staffed for operators since 2008. So my question would be, it's very nice to see that there's going to be four additional positions in our department, and it's very nice to see that there's going to be a recognition that there's only so much blood that you can squeeze from a stone in terms of cutting staff before services just start to break down. But my question is, if we cannot fill those positions now, if the Police Department cannot fill those positions now, if the Fire Department cannot fill the positions they already have now, then simply budgeting extra positions into the budget as a budget line doesn't really seem to be a viable way of making sure that we get those, those absolutely needed positions filled. I can tell you that the amount of emergencies that tie up the entirety of the Fire Department in this city is very small. We saw a perfect example of that with the fire at Glen O'Towers last week, where we had to actually call the Fire Departments of West Peoria and Peoria Heights to come staff our stations, because we did not have the personnel to respond to anything else that was going on in the city at that time. With the police, it's very much the same thing. A couple of incidences, and all of a sudden, the entire shift's worth of officers is. A couple of incidences, and all of a sudden, the entire shift's worth of officers is tied up doing things. And as the chief, I can see him nodding his head, what that means is that citizens who have nonviolent emergency complaints, like their car was stolen, something was stolen from their house, they're being harassed by an ex, they wait hours to get service because we cannot fill the positions that we already have budgeted. And I tie that back to my thing about the negotiations in terms of a COVID bonus in that Peoria Public School employees have gotten a COVID bonus, Peoria Park District employees have gotten a COVID bonus, employees of Peoria County have gotten a COVID bonus, employees of Knox County have gotten a COVID bonus, employees of several other municipalities and localities in our area have gotten a COVID bonus. Almost every single person in my department contracted COVID during work-related time in the city. And as HR could tell you, we were all paid workman's comp for that. Lots of other employees of the city also contracted COVID during their essential time as employees. The lack of the ability to even acknowledge that and discuss that with the collective bargaining units of city employees is just one of many ways that morale has suffered amongst the people who serve this city and serve this public. I've reached out to several council members to discuss this, and the response I got, which makes sense, is you should contact the city manager. This is me telling you as a member of the executive board of my union that we have contacted city management twice about this issue and have received no response. I would hope that perhaps that changes, not only for us, for the firefighters and the police officers who are, you know, always heroes until it comes time to actually take care of our pay and benefits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have another card from Ms. Carrie Alms.
Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and city council members. My name is Carrie Alms. On September 4th, 2014, the Illinois Attorney General issued a binding opinion stating that a public body that requires speakers to provide their home addresses prior to addressing the governmental body violates the Illinois Open Meetings Act. This opinion applies regardless of whether the requirement arises from custom and practice or it is imposed by an established and written rule of the public body. I'm coming here tonight because many of you know me for decades, actually, and my love of the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act and public process is how actually alone we can do so little, together we can do so much. So I thank you for your service, your positions, and at times are certainly demanding and grueling and also very rewarding. So I'd like to address these policies. So I'd ask that the ones that I bring up tonight, I would ask that someone would look at them and redo them. So this card right here that's asking for my name and address or any person's name and address is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Also, in Section 2-48 of the Peoria Code, listed up at MuniCode, that is where that is, needs to be addressed and changed by ordinance. Also, last week, there was the talk about the abstention, and it is not appropriate to ask any member why they're abstaining unless, of course, it had something to do with conflict of interest. Although the council member's response was very illuminating, it once again shows that all the years that we've come down here and people have asked about the process and everything, and you're drinking like from a fire hose. Now with the pandemic, that has only exacerbated the whole situation of drinking from a fire hose and not having things really prepared. So council members are not getting it. And then council members who are getting updates and yellow sheets at the meeting, that information is not passed on to the public. So if they wanted to make a public comment, again, they are cut out of the process. Also, before, the city clerk read some comments that I asked before. I still have not, you know, nobody has contacted me back. I've talked to several council members and everything. But I'm very concerned about money being put in a budget that we don't know anywhere where the program, what it's going to be spent on. Several of you mentioned that tonight, okay? So there is a committee that the mayor has of 50-ish people that we have been reported on in the media. And in Section 2-61, special committees shall be appointed by the mayor by and with the consent and approval of the council, except as may be otherwise authorized by the council. The public has no idea who is meeting on there, and that's not the point. It's just that it should be public information. If you're already considering proposals that are going to be funded with taxpayer dollars, all of those meetings of that special committee should be done in public. That's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So I'm asking you to please look into training, look into continuing to do a better job because it's very important. There is low levels of trust in so many different areas in our society, and anxiety and depression, and people just being so worn out with everything. You are the leaders, okay? When you start attacking each other, you know, Robert's Rules of Order asks you to speak to the chair, not to each other, not to say, "I agree with," or whatever, but do whatever you want to do. But that's not how Robert's Rules of Order is. It's to talk about issues. It's not to talk about personalities. And if you are going to start talking about personalities, in the code, number 29, censures of members, it's a very paltry amount. But maybe you might consider fining each other $1 to $25 and start putting that in the firemen and police pension funds. I mean, you have to do a better job of treating each other with respect. So other people would treat each other with respect, including all of these youth who are forgotten children, who have been treated like garbage for much of their life. They have no respect for themselves because they haven't been treated with respect. Please try to look within yourself and do a better job. Thank you.
Okay, we do have an executive session. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Wait, we need a motion to go into executive session.
Pardon me? Executive session, and I'd like, please. And I'd like to state the reasons that we're going into closed session. We need closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, 2C11 in regards to pending litigation, 2C1 in regards to hiring legal counsel, 2C21 in regards to review of closed session minutes, and 2C5 for the purchase of property and discussion of whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Good counsel. Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Seer to adjourn. Please cast your ballots.
This is for executive session, is that correct?
It's to adjourn, to go into executive session. Are you not voting? We are adjourned to go into executive.